All right, while I do that, the hour having arrived, I'm going to open the the meeting. Welcome everybody to the Town of Wakefield Board of Appeals Meeting for Wednesday, October 29th. A reminder to everyone on here that the the meeting is being recorded, it will be available for replaying the town's website within a few days. We'll stop by roll call, Dave Hatfield.
Here.
Joe Pride.
Here.
Kasumi Humphries.
Yeah.
Greg Demersion.
Here.
And my name's Tom Lucy, obviously, I am here. With that, I'm going to ask our clerk, Joe Pride, to read the legal notes.
Sure thing, Mr. Chair, consistent with the governor's orders extended certain provisions of the open meeting law, every effort will be made to allow the public to view and to listen to this meeting in real time. If you do not have a camera or microphone on on your computer, you may use the following dial in number one three zero one seven one five eight five nine two, meeting ID eight four eight eight two one six two two one zero, pass code one one four three three zero. Please only use dial in or computer and not both, as audio feedback will distort the meeting. This meeting will be audio and video recorded in compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. This location is accessible to people with disabilities. Wakefield provides reasonable accommodations and or language assistance free of charge upon request. If you are a person with a disability and require information or materials in an alternate format, or you are or if you require any other accommodation, please contact the town's disability coordinator, William Renault, town engineer at seven eight one two four six six three zero eight as far as event in advance of the event as possible. Every effort will be made to grant your request. Advanced notification will enable the town to make reasonable arrangements to remove an accessibility barrier for you. One continued hearings, two twenty six dash seventeen twenty six dash eighteen, twenty three New Salem Street, Inc., application for determination and or finding with respects to a continuation, extension, reconstruction of nonconforming structure lot under Article nine, section one ninety dash fifty and one ninety dash fifty five of the Wakefield zoning bylaw to adjust the interior side lot line to account for for and remedy a longstanding building encroachment application for variance under one ninety dash sixty six and table two of the dimensional requirements of the Wakefield zoning bylaw to adjust the interior side lot line to account for and remedy a longstanding building encroachment. The property shown as map seventeen lot parcels two six three dash one nine six of the assessment map and is located at twenty three Salem Street. Three twenty three twenty six dash nineteen twenty six dash twenty, Robert Sullivan, trustee, RBB JM Realty Trust, application for a determination and or finding with respects to a continuation extension reconstruction of nonconforming structural lot under Article nine, section one ninety dash fifty and one ninety one ninety dash fifty five of the Wakefield zoning bylaw to and to adjust the interior side lot line to account for the for and remedy a longstanding building encroachment application for variance under one ninety dash sixty six and table two of the dimensional requirements of the Wakefield zoning bylaw to adjust the interior side lot line to account for and remedy a longstanding building encroachment. The property is shown as map seventeen lot parcels two four six four dash two, sorry, one nine six B A comma B B B C, B D and B E of the assessment map and is located at nineteen Salem Street. Four twenty three, sorry, twenty six dash twenty one twenty six dash twenty two, Iona LLC, application for a special permit pursuant to Article four, section one ninety dash twenty three of the Wakefield zoning bylaw and site plan review in conjunction with conjunction there within there with pursuant to Article eight, section one ninety dash forty four of, sorry, one ninety dash forty five of the Wakefield zoning bylaw to allow a gas station gasoline station for the charging of electric vehicles on its on the premises. Application for a special permit pursuant to Article seven, section one ninety dash thirty thirty six C of the Wakefield zoning bylaw to allow reductions in in the requirements and or standards for off-street parking and loading under Article seven of the Wakefield zoning bylaw. The property is shown as map forty one lot parcels twenty seven and twenty seven A, the assessment map and is located at five two five Salem Street Board of Appeals.
Thank you, Joe. I will note that the membership Tarbell has now joined us. I'll also note that members Kirsten Brown and Mitt Patel will be unable to attend tonight. So going to the agenda, as is our practice, we've had some requests for continuance. I'll read those into the record. So if folks are here for these cases, they will be continued to a later date. First up, a letter dated today from attorney Brian McGrail, case number twenty five eleven thirty five Stark Avenue. Please continue this matter until your meeting in December. I need to confirm with the building inspector that he is all set with the matter and he's out of town till tomorrow. We also agree to extend the time for the board to render and file any decisions regarding this matter until and including January thirty first twenty twenty six. So looking for a continuance to our meeting in December and to for the board to render, agree to extend the time till January thirty first of twenty twenty six.
So, Mr. Chair, I'm prepared to make a motion. I just want to ask through you that Mr. McGrell, do we think we're going to get closure on this?
You know, we have it. I just need to confirm one thing with Ben, and he was out this week. He'll be back tomorrow.
Okay, because I went back to my notes and we've been continuing this basically for about a year.
It's what it is, is it's a point, David, it just goes back that it was it was an enforcement order and there were a number of things that had to be done with this to get it in order, including the Conservation Commission. There were a lot of moving parts to this. And I think we're finally there. So I appreciate the board's patience with it.
Okay, but if the expectation is you're probably going to withdraw, I mean, you just need to close before you actually withdraw like or is there a chance it could come back to us? And that's why you want to keep it going?
I just have to protect my client's interest until Ben is fully signed off, because if I I withdraw it, I lose my opportunity to do any appeal on anything and and
Okay.
we're in a really, my client's in a very difficult position at that point. And the building inspector understands that. We're right in sync on that. It's not a typical on enforcement order that can go on for quite some time before this resolution.
Right. Okay, I just just want to clarify. So I appreciate that. So, Mr. Chair, I I move that we continue this matter to our December tenth, twenty twenty five meeting and accept the applicant's request to extend the time for the board to render a decision on this matter to January thirty first, twenty twenty six.
Seconded.
Yeah, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion here and seeing non-regular voting members? Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
Kasumi?
Yes.
I vote yes. Matt, it's continued to December. Next up, a letter dated today from attorney Brian McGrail regarding our case numbers twenty five dash twenty one, twenty five dash twenty two, one fifty four and one fifty eight Salem Street. Please continue this matter to your meeting on November twelfth, and we're working on draft conditions in an O and M plan as requested by the board.
Okay, so we got materials for this, but we want to continue this, Brian? Instead of going over the stuff we got?
Correct, because we're finalizing the conditions and the O and M plan. And we're also waiting on a meeting with the butter.
Okay, so we'll do all of that at the November hearing then?
That will be the goal. Yep.
Okay. All right, Mr. Chair, I move that we continue the matter at one fifty four, one fifty eight Salem Street to our November twelfth, twenty twenty five meeting.
Seconded.
Yeah, motion's been made, seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing seeing non-regular voting members, Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
Kasumi?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Matt, it's continued. Next up, letter from attorney Michael McCarthy dated October twenty first. Please consider this letter request to continue the yet the yet unopened public hearing related to nineteen Salem Street and twenty three New Salem Street from a hearing on October twenty ninth to your hearing in November. It continues to be being requested nor to allow the petitioner who is unable to participate on October twenty ninth to be present at the hearing. This letter will also confirm my client's agreement to extend the time for the board's consideration of an action on said application for a late period of time.
So, Mr. Chair, I move that we continue the matter at nineteen and twenty three New Salem Street, the yet as unopened hearing. It's at nineteen and twenty three New Salem Street to our meeting on November twelfth, twenty twenty five, and accept the applicant's request to extend the time for the board to render a decision for a light period of time. Doesn't state a date, but for for suitable time for us to render a decision following that hearing.
We can work out the exact date the next year.
Sure.
In November.
Yep.
Seconded.
Yeah, motion's been made, seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing seeing non-regular voting members, Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
Kasumi?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Matt, it's continued until November. Next up, cases twenty six, twenty one, twenty six, twenty two, five twenty five Salem Street. Believe this is yours, Mr. McGrail, and I think what we want to do tonight is just open the hearing and hear kind of general overview. Talk to other board members to not that I see traffic is a huge issue here, but its location, we might want to send this to the Traffic Advisory Committee as well. Be willing to hear what members think about that as well, just because it's by a tricky intersection and we have some curb cuts and stuff, so with that, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, for the record, attorney Brian McGrail representing the applicant on this matter. With me tonight is Lynda Lee with WB Engineer. She's the project manager on this site in project. And also David Lane, who is with Iona with the company. So I think David might want to talk a little bit about, you know, what it what it's all about. You've seen the site plans, I think, and the plans that we've submitted. So this is a, I think, an exciting and unique proposal for our town being chosen for one of the Iona locations. Iona was formed in two thousand twenty three. It's a joint venture between BMW, Mercedes Benz, General Motors, Solantis, Hyundai, Honda, Kia and Toyota. And those automakers have a goal of electrifying three thirty thousand new charge points across North America by two thousand thirty. And they've selected our town as one of those locations. They have, you know, we've applied for this as a gasoline station. So when you saw the application, you were probably confused. I think a lot of people were. And the reason we did is pursuant to discussions between our building inspector and town council mullen. They they determined that this is where we fit, because it's it sells a product, that being electricity for motor vehicles. So it fits in, it's it's an application for a special permit for gasoline station, but there will be no gasoline or petrol fuel at the site. It's a it's a one hundred percent electrified charging station for motor vehicles. They, there's amenities involved here. There's restrooms for the for the users. So, you know, people would pull in. They would have a place to use the restroom, maybe, you know, get a little place with vending to get a snack, some seating area. And and they would wait for their cars to charge. I think the typical charge could be anywhere from thirty to sixty minutes. There's a variant of the type of types of charges are equipped with C C three and A C S connectors, so they're capable of simultaneous charging on each charge point. So very efficient facility, really designed for this purpose. So I'm going to get it into the into the, as you mentioned, Mr. Chair, tonight, just kind of the thirty thousand foot overlook of the site plan and some some basic renderings for comment. Before I do, David Lane, I would ask you, if you could, on behalf of Iona, just to kind of talk a little bit more, expand maybe on some of the things that I've said, if that's possible, if you would be kind enough to do that.
Sure. Yeah, everybody hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, I've got the different headset in. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for hosting us and hearing our case. I'm David Lane. I'm a design manager with Iona and our goal is, Brian explained, you're we're trying to deploy DC fast charging throughout the states. This year, we have a pretty ambitious goal. We believe we'll we'll get there, but in the years to follow, we look to build out and serve a lot of areas that are in need of new vehicle charging to promote the expansion and use of electric vehicles throughout the states, you know, that'll kind of solve some of the issues of range anxiety and other issues, you know, and hopefully one day it will be as common as a gas station. So we are applying a gas station as this in this case, we are a little bit new for some ordinances, so you know, we've got to try to find a way to fit in. So that's the the reason we apply it as such, but you know, our goal is to be a big good partner and be in areas where, you know, in a safe lit well lit location where people are welcome to charge and have attractive facility that people want to visit and continue to and have restroom facilities and canopies to keep people out of the weather while they're ready to charge. And you're correct, typically a charge may take thirty minutes to an hour, depending on how quickly the vehicle can accept a charge, the size of the battery, there's a lot of factors, you know, batteries are all different sizes and different vehicles, so. But it's generally about an hour, so you'll have a good enough charge to get on your way.
Thank you, Dave. So with that said, Mr. Chair, I'm just going to share my screen if I may?
Yeah, please do.
So first of all, the site is at five twenty five Salem Street, sometimes known as five twenty five, five twenty seven. Some members of the board are probably familiar with this site. This site was permitted probably about four years ago now for a twenty four unit multifamily development. This is right, you know, to familiarize the board, the location, this is this is Pleasure Island Road down here. So this is if you're coming from Lynn Field, if you follow my cursor, this site is on the right. And then you have an office building here, and then you're at the light. So you can take a right on Pleasure Island Road, or you can go straight across and Dunkin' Donuts and Irving lawyer will be on your left hand side. As I've mentioned, this property was permitted already for twenty four unit multifamily building. The owner of the property decided not to go forward with that project for economic reasons, Mr. Zeraski, and so he's been trying to find a good use for this building or this property for quite some time. And, you know, he thought this was a really good fit. He's looked at a number of prospective tenants. This is a good fit because it's a real kind of on the map for Wakefield to get something like this. It's clean. You know, there's no, you know, fuel issues or or fumes or anything like that, obviously, with electric charging. It's not a high traffic flow, you know, because as you'll see, we're going to have eight charging units which can charge a maximum of sixteen vehicles at a time. And that's, you know, adequate that you're not going to have a line of people to get in here, because there's plenty of space. It's a it's a great lot for this. It's a super location right near Route one twenty eight. And, you know, we think it really fits in. So this is really the existing conditions on the site. It's a vacant lot kind of overgrown and I'm going to go right to our overall site plan. So, you know, it's a pretty basic site plan, because, you know, there's not a lot, not much happening here. So we've we've delineated the paved area. This will all be left as open space. We're proposing some some shrubbery here and some, you know, some arborvitaries, because this is this, you know, obviously, a facility like this takes, you know, a lot of transformer, a lot of electricity. So, you know, we're blocking that. These are the proposed charging stations. They look like gas pumps and but they're not. And then they're proposing a prefab building, pretty, pretty basic building that would have, you know, restrooms, facilities and, you know, as I said, perhaps a place for people to get a snack or a vending machine and then some some seating that would be available. So not a real, you know, and then I have a dumpster enclosure back here, just the, you know, minimal trash that would be that would be handled. So again, pretty, pretty basic site plan. I'm going to move on. This is just a part of our site plan and maneuverability for emergency vehicles, which, you know, it's been reviewed by the fire department. They have some some questions of us, which we can set up a meeting with them. I'm going to stop this screen for a minute. And then in your package, we have some some basic renderings. So this is if you're coming from Lynn Field, as I've mentioned, there's an office building over here. They do want a canopy, but it's pretty basic, not looking for any lighting on the canopy, just the Iona sign. And then they have these low profile lights. What we did is is our curb cut is as far away from the intersection as possible. We match what was done on the twenty four unit multifamily building. That's what the T A C requested on that project, which would have obviously a lot more flow than something like this, but they just wanted to get that curb cut as far away from the intersection as possible. And we've matched that here. This gives you a real good idea. You know, they do look like gas pumps, but they're charges. And, you know, their their canopy is, you know, we can get in as we go on through the hearings, the height, but it's a pretty low profile canopy. And we've seen the memos from DPW. We just got that just came in late, late this afternoon. Haven't really had a chance to go through it, but they have a few questions, as does the fire department. So we'll we'll be setting up meetings with them and also they're reviewing the drainage study, which was was recently submitted. You can see the seating area here with, you know, the the restroom amenity building. And that's a straight on site. So it's it's unique, it's new, but it's not too complicated. It's, you know, I think a pretty simple site plan. I hope that gives the the board a flavor of what's being proposed and, you know, we're we, you know, like your thoughts on it, obviously, and in input and perhaps, you know, a list of additional information that you might want to require.
Okay, is that it, Mr. McGrail?
That's it. I thought that would be sufficient for this evening, Mr. Chair. I think you want me to go in much more detail than that.
No, that's perfect. I see Chip, I see you hand up, but I do have some correspondence from town departments. I'd like to just read into the record. I do not have the DPW one with me, but I, because we got that late this afternoon, I believe I forwarded that to all the members. So we'll read that into the record at the next meeting. But the for the other two letters I have, first one's dated October twenty third from acting fire chief Tom Purcell. Now, the Wakefield Fire Department has been asked to review the application to allow a station for charging electric vehicles of the above nature property. Fire Department will require meeting with Iona LLC prior to any development in regard to compliance with five two seven C M R one point oh, all applicable NFPA electrical energy code standards, as well as additional safety requirements. After reviewing the application, the department has no objection to this project, providing conditions the department sets in said meeting regarding the applicable code and safety are met. Next up is from dated October tenth from Elaine Reeland from the Conservation Commission. The work consisting construction will take be taking place outside the jurisdictional areas of the Wetlands Protection Act. This project will not require filing from the Conservation Commission. And again, if you can check your emails for the DPW memo, folks can read that. Chip, I saw you hand up first. Go to members.
Hi, Tom. Trying to keep this at at thirty thousand feet as well. A couple of things that I would want to see moving forward is I think the landscaping here is pretty minimal, so I would suggest they get a landscape architect in to look at what could be done to enhance the property. Two, it appears to me like the transformers are on the front edge of the property with the basic app providing around them. I would love to see those transformers pushed to the back of the property so that you don't have that barrier along Salem Street, looking into the property that it's more open. And those are my two comments to start, but other than that, I think that was laid out nicely and all good.
All right, thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, interesting proposal and concept here, right off the highway. But again, just a few basic questions. I did, when I saw the the requested use on a gas station, I did question it. I went to the definition. It just, you know, in my mind, it didn't seem to fit that definition necessarily, but if the town council and building inspector are okay with it, then I'm not going to argue with them, but under the other special permit is for parking relief, so just want to make make sure we bring out, you know, what what relief you're requesting there. The one of the sheets, you know, a couple of the site plans, I didn't notice this. We'll get to site plan review, obviously, but I want to make sure we got vertical, vertical granite curbs. Didn't see it mentioned. Yes, I agree, we should get some T A C input, Tom. You mentioned that upfront. It does look like one of the plans shows some stormwater catch basin, so we're going to want to see a stormwater management plan. Obviously, more signage details on where they are, just canopy, but it looks like the back of the building, nothing at street level that I can see or out at the entrance, but maybe there is, and I missed it. So we'll want to go through the signage lighting plan. I saw again some basic info, but we're going to want to understand all the lighting specs and where those poles are and building lightage and under the canopy and so forth. And I also had landscaping, but Chip already covered that. So those are my initial comments, just as we move forward, just making sure we cover those other bases. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Great, thank you. Joe?
Yeah, I just want to piggyback off what Dave Hatfield said. The rendering shows like a lot of light poles, so maybe we'll do a little light study. It seemed like a excessive amount of light poles for a little lot, so that was really the only thing that stuck out with me. I don't know if the rendering shows what the site civil is going to present, but that was the only thing that kind of stuck out my my head. The other question I had is, it might be a off the off the cuff question, but is there is there a lot of money in in this kind of thing? Seems, oh. Is there a lot of people looking for charges? Is this going to be like a high traffic kind of thing or like, I don't know, just I guess a quick question I had.
Well, I think you have to look at, you know, as I mentioned, those major car manufacturers that are behind this. And they're trying, you know, their goal is to set up a network in North America that, as Dave said, takes the, you know, kind of kind of the anxiety of folks that have electric vehicles, that they're going to have a place to get off and be able to look at on a map or an app so they can plan their trips and know that they've got a reliable, dependable location and a safe location that they can pull into to to charge. Dave, do you have anything to add to that? Is that kind of?
Sure, sure. Yeah, there's a lot of investment going on, so the return's not there yet, but yeah, we were found about auto manufacturers were completely separate from them, but the goal is to, you know, promote the vehicles that they're you know, manufacturing and promote their use, you know, that they can sell more EVs, obviously, if the public feels, you know, more comfortable about buying them and being able to charge them and use them. You know, as you would a, you know, traditional petroleum, gasoline, diesel, fuel vehicle. To address some of the lighting too, we I've got the photometrics, you know, we can certainly share those down if they haven't been submitted, but, you know, we do have a little bit higher lighting standard just to keep people at ease at night too, so, but we'll certainly can, you know, share that and review it further down the line too.
Yeah, great. No, I just, it seemed like a lot of upfront money to invest in something that big if you're only going to make one or two cents per kilowatt hour or whatever you guys charge, but
I'm sure. Beyond my department, but yeah. Yeah, just the the one in construction and development side of it, but yeah. You know, the forecast says, you know, one day to have the payoff on it, so, but yeah, I guess ultimately, I guess it's just, you know, end up helping the OEM seller vehicles more too. That's part of it.
I appreciate the feedback. Thank you.
Yeah, Brian, just to follow up on Joe's thing on lighting, when the time comes, if you can just, I think most people ride by here all the time on the board. But if you can help us with a little context study of where the closest residential units are to this. And, you know, if you're thinking about hours of operation and all those sorts of things. We're just going to want to make sure there's no light trespass on those residential properties. Dave, your hand went back up?
Yeah, I thought of two more things, so. And you just kind of touched on a little bit. So with, did you say you were thinking this is a twenty four hour operation? Like twenty four by seven?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, so yeah, we're going to want to understand lighting impacts and, and any spillover, I saw the lumens plans, but just, we'll, we'll need to get into that a little bit. And also I saw, and Chip mentioned transformers, so have you been in touch with the D B W, like we're tapping into Wakefield Power for this? And I don't know how much these charging stations draw, like to charge all the cars. I see them, we know we have them around town, singular ones, right? But now you're putting a bank of them, and I know we got, you know, a substation near there, so like that all needs to be worked out, it's not necessarily in our purview, but it's just, you know, more of a general question, like how they get serviced, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, the originators have corresponded, so.
Yeah.
Yes, and I can speak to that. So the plan was-
You've got to identify yourself if you could.
Oh, I'm sorry, Linda Lee with W B Engineers, the project manager for the design team. Let me share my screen and we can work with the utility to see if there's another option.
Just a general question again, I know we're at the start of this, but people that live in that area, they'll be like, oh, my lights are going to dim, they're going to be drawing power from my house, you know? People, you know, the general public, you know, they might be wondering what this could do to their, their own personal situation, how it's, you know, being consumed, where it's drawing from and how it could affect the neighborhood. Hopefully it doesn't and it shouldn't, right? But those could be concerns that neighbors have, that's all.
Yeah, we'll definitely take a look at the lighting plan, I think there could be a reduction there, so we'll take another look and make an analysis there. And then with the transformer location, we can assess if we can move that to the back into the parcel. But as of now, the current plan was to extend the line from the existing pole here. And that was just in a, a fairly accessible location, but we can reassess and maybe see if we can move it back here. Go back to the plans.
And drawing the power off the pole services the entire charging stations, all the charging stations?
Yes.
Potentially if they're all being used at once.
Yes, and there'd be some, there's load management software on the chargers, so if they were all charging at the same time, then they would kind of level it out, so it'd be enough for the transformer, for the transformer could hold, manage it.
Again, it's unique, one, this first one we've ever done, I think, as, as an entity like this, so just some new questions for us to consider our things, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Yep, and I want to stress that I, I appreciate the reassessment, but I'm with Chip, I thought he hit the nail on the head. I don't want to see a reassessment, I want to see it happen. So you got a pretty high bar here not to do it, so.
On the transformers, Tom?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Again, I don't think you're hearing any Game Stoppers here, I, I, I think people are pretty intrigued and understand that this is the future, so. Anything else from any members of the board? Because again, just going back to transformers, because the residential units around that area, many of them are going to be across the street, so, and what you have at the back of your lot is 128. So that's where I think those transformers should be, and I think Chip kind of sent that message to.
Okay, I'll work with the utility to see if we can get that back there.
Okay, anybody else on the board? Okay, with that, I'm going to open it up to the public, is there any member of the public here that's here to testify regarding this application on the evidence that you heard at tonight's hearing? If so, please use the raised hand function in Zoom. Very small crowd tonight, so. Going once, going twice. Okay, public comment is closed, back to the board, pleasure of the board.
You're muted.
Yeah, if there's-
It would help if I came off mute, I assume you want to continue to November and just keep it going, right?
Yeah, and Mr. McGrail, I think you, you heard some pretty clear direction from the board on what we're looking for, and to your point, I think it's, in some ways it's very simple. But I do think people want to nail down details and, and get this thing right.
Yeah, I, I get all the list. You know, we've got some homework to do, but I think this was a good introductory meeting. And we appreciate the feedback, I guess the one clarification or decision I would request from the board would be on T A C, is that something that we should do?
Yeah, please do.
Okay.
And again, I, I don't, I don't, to your point earlier on, I don't see it as a big traffic issue, I just see the location of the curb cut, given that intersection is one that they're going to want to look at. And you've kind of already have, but, but let's have belt and suspenders, because as you know, in that neighborhood, as those condo and apartment units were built further down the street, folks are very concerned about traffic and, and and how to access sites and so forth, so I, I don't see that being a high hurdle for you either.
So yeah, we would request to continue it to the, the next meeting, I don't know if we'll be ready, I mean, you know, what's happening is that next meeting is pretty quick.
Yeah, it's two weeks.
It's two weeks, so, you know, and we have to submit the Friday before, so, but in case we do have some information, I would like to schedule that in anticipation that it might be a continuance, just to, you know, if we're not ready, we're not going to waste the board's time. Because I, I don't think with, you know, my estimate is with, with a project like this, to just come back with small piecemeal probably doesn't make a lot of sense. Because I think the list that you gave us is not too, you know, not too involved.
Yeah, and I don't know when T A C meets, you might not, there's probably not even a meeting between now and then, but maybe I'm wrong. So.
Yep.
But to your point though, we should probably, board, I'm thinking November 12th, just to put a place holder there.
Agreed, Mr. Chair, I will, I will make such a motion that we continue this matter to our, at 525 Salem Street, to our November 12th, 2025 meeting.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made, seconded, any further discussion? Hearing seeing non-regular voting members, Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
Kasumi?
Yes.
I vote yes too, thank you for your presentation, we'll hope, maybe see you on the 12th, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to other matters, first up, 21 Princess Street, Ellie's Pizza Wakefield signage update, is there somebody here for that?
Crickets.
Anybody? Okay.
So, Mr. Chair-
We, we were dealing with the, the owner back in August, he was going to make some updates. So I think it's just his sole proprietor, so we'll give this person a break and if they come back, I'll recall it at the end of other matters.
So, Mr. Chair, just before we move on, so to this and, and perhaps the next one, yeah. Even though they fall under other matters, it would be good if we could to request, if they're going to present a plan, a signed plan, a modification to a special permit that has some update, it'd be good to get it by the Friday before too, if, if we can request that, when, when they get, when they're in contact with the building department, if we can request it, it just gives us an opportunity to see what they're proposing, so we get prepared, just like all the others, right? Even though it's under other matters, it would be good, some, some are de minimis and maybe they're small. But again, if we're talking signage, it just gives us a chance to review it ahead of time, so we're not looking at it for the first time that night, so.
Yeah, like I said on that one, I, I'd give a little wee way, because I think we're just dealing with the, the owner of a pizza shop and-
No, I understand, I'm not, I'm not, yeah, if they couldn't make it, they couldn't make it, maybe we'll get them at the next meeting, I just, but if we can reach out to them and say, hey, if you got a sign plan, can you send it to us in advance? That should be an easy ask, if they got something they were going to share, if we can get in advance, that'd be great. That's all, thank you.
All right, so we'll, we'll, we'll put on hold 21 Princess Street, I'll call it again, but let's move on for the sake of all of our time. 241828-
Do you guys hear me okay? Hello?
Hi, Tom, I do think that he's on the meeting now.
Okay, we'll, we'll go back to that 21 Princess Street, Ellie's Pizza Wakefield.
Uh, yes, hi, I was having some issues connecting, good evening, everyone.
No problem. Okay, what do you have for us?
Um, is it okay if I share my screen?
Please do.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So first of all, I wanted to apologize a little bit, because last time we spoke, we kind of, I kind of promised I will get back to you in about six to seven months. This took a little more because I was with another company, that company did not, I couldn't move forward with them, so finally I found a company that's willing to do it. And this is the, the schematics that they sent me, this is with Mark Ariam, I think you guys know him. He does a lot of science in, in Wakefield. So there's two, two plans here, this one is the outside one that's facing Princess Street, this is the one that hangs over. So as we agreed on, the base is staying the same, there is no change in lighting, no change in the base of the sign. The only thing that's changing is that the, the letters will be 3D as you guys requested, they will pop out from the base. And they will be exactly like the prior business had it, the Fouquet vessels, they'll be exactly the same as they had it. So they will be made out of thick raised acrylic paint. And they will be mounting, so nothing else is changing besides the Ellie's Pizza that's going to be raised up, so when the lighting hits it, you'll be able to see it. Also, there is a second sign that's by the door, by the entrance on the left-hand side. And that one will be, we will redo the same thing there, it's going to be with 48 inch, 27 and a one and a half thick signage foam. Else that one will be also raised, so we can see the pop-up of the letters. The only thing that he mentioned was that the, the Wakefield sign sub copy will be a vinyl cut. And it will be stud mounted to the face of the building. We are ready to move forward with this, with this plan. I spoke with the building inspector and we all agreed that we wanted you guys to review this, and if it's okay with you, this is what you want, and we will move forward with the production.
Okay, thank you. Members of the board? Comments, questions?
I mean, I think this is what we're looking for and we just didn't have enough, you know, information last time, so I'm fine with these, it's kind of almost replacing what was there.
I would agree, Mr. Chair, again, just seems tasteful, I like, you know, the placement and the size seems appropriate and I'm fine with it.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, and it's under other matters, so I'm not going to open it up to public comment. Pleasure of the board here.
So this is just a sign update, right, we're not modifying a special permit or anything? It's just a, replacing existing signage, right?
Correct.
All right, so, Mr. Chair, I will move that we, we approve the, the updated sign plan for Ellie's Pizza at 21 Princess Street, the sign plan from Macarian Sign Company dated October 24th, 2025, as presented to us this evening for two signs, one on the entrance of the building, near the doorway, and a hanging bracketed sign on the front side on Princeton Street.
Seconded.
Dave, motion's been made, seconded, any further discussion? Hearing seeing non-regular voting members, Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
Kasumi?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Thank you, appreciate the effort and good luck with the signs and the business.
Thank you so much.
Good luck, have a good night.
You too.
Next up, other matters, 24-1820 A Del Carmen Street, Three Ducklings Learning Center, minor mod of a special permit to allow an outside fence play area at a daycare center.
Right, thank you, Mr. Chair, Attorney Brian McGrail for the applicant, Telehun Ibro is here, he is the owner of Three Ducklings daycare, this is at 28 Del Kai Mine Street, which your board may remember, which is across from Fernal Field. And we were here a while ago and got a special permit. And one of the things that the board at that time stated was, gee, are you going to have any outside play area? And at that time, it was, you know, the, the landlord really wasn't open to the concept. My client wanted that and has continued to pursue it and, and simply, so it was really contemplated that we might be back for modification to allow that. And if I can just share my screen to show you what we're thinking.
Yeah, go ahead.
Pretty, pretty basic, so really look, just looking for approximately 700 square foot area. Let me familiarize you with the location, so this is Del Carmine, as you come down, the daycare is in this building with a number of other uses. Fernal Field is over here, and we're, we're proposing to do the, the playground is, is way back in the back of the lot, in the grass area, it's really appropriate. Really isolated, would be a, a black chain link fence, about 700 square feet. Right now, he's not proposing any, any play structures, might put something in there in the future, but just a place, you know, maybe some, you know, basic toys that would go in there. Really a place for, for the kids to go and be fenced in where they can be let loose, you know, with, with supervision, obviously, but where it's fenced in, you know, a lot less stress in that regard, really doesn't harm anybody back here, it's way out of the way, you won't even really see it, not even from Fernal Field. So it, it really would be, I think, again, a contemplated modification to the special permit to allow the play area.
Okay, members of the board, comments, questions?
Mr. Chair, I got a quick comment, actually, I parked there a few times because my son plays baseball with it. Brian, do you need a guard rail there, or anything, just in case a car decides to drive past there and into the playground?
You know, I mean, I guess that's subjective, Joe, you know, I can tell you that where I am in Lakeside Office Park, it, 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 there's two playground areas there, daycare, same thing. You know, like virtually identical and there's no, there's no issue there.
Yeah, I mean-
And it was one that was just permitted there, so it's, it's back in the corner of my office building, I park in front of it every day with the kids out there.
Brian, Brian, do we have a real size? I mean, I don't see any dimensions on this.
No, but- It would be no greater than 700 square feet, Chip, and that could be in the correspondence to the building inspector.
And what's the surface going to be?
It's just going to stay grass for now. Maybe wood chip, but you know, we have to go to the Conservation Commission on this also, because you see the proximity to the river.
Yeah.
Very similar to what we just did at Lakeside Office Park, almost identical, and in there they put, they put mulch.
Well, they probably put playground chips, right?
Yeah.
How high a fence? I mean, we really don't have any real details on this.
We can get you details, I mean, if you want details, we can, we can do that.
I think it needed for the building inspector. You know, is it a three-foot fence, a four-foot fence?
Telehun, do you want, could you unmute and identify yourself and what your thoughts are on that?
Uh, good evening, everyone. Hey, I, I don't have the height of the fence yet, I was going to check a couple of playgrounds in the area to match what they're currently using. If there's any, so we're flexible on it, so if there's any requirements from the board, we can be flexible on, on the height of, of the fence.
I think four foot is reasonable, I think three feet is probably too small, right?
Well, what I-
But black chain link or vinyl material, yeah.
I mean, Mr. Chair, here's what I'm thinking, is we really don't have the exact dimensions, we really don't have what type of fence. To me, this is a no-brainer and should be allowed, but they also have to go to Concom. My suggestion would be they come back to us with, knowing that it's going to be okay, that they come back to us with more specifics after they go to Concom. So we know what conditions Concom's put on them, and if anything has to change, and then we'll know what type of fence, what height of fence, what's the, what's the surface going to be, and just a few more details. That would be my suggestion as a possible play here, I don't know what you think.
Well, I, I, I'm thinking that it is a no-brainer and that- maybe you guys empower me to sign off on it, so they're not, we're not ping-ponging, we're back on basically seven hundred square foot fenced-in area.
It's fine, fine with me. I just think there's a lot of balls still in the air for this thing, if they have to go to Concom.
Are you scheduled with Concom, Brian?
Yeah, so if I can add to that, so Concom's gonna want us resolved with you first. We have to resolve with you before we can go to them.
So you haven't even applied?
The filing with Concom is really simple, we're digging fence posts. I mean, so it's not like, you know, you know, just like it was with the lake, you know, my professional opinion will be a pretty simple, straightforward process with them. They're not gonna have any issue with this, but it, but it does require a filing, because we're disrupting soil within the limit of the river. So, but they're gonna want to know the size, and, you know, so we would rather resolve it with yard board first, that's what they're gonna want to see. And by the way, in that regard, we're happy to come back, you know, I'm respecting Chip, what you're asking for, so we're happy to come back with whatever you want with detail, but we'd like to get, we'd like to get it fully resolved with you, and then obviously, you will, you will condition it upon us getting conservation approval.
I would, I would move, Mr. Chairman, that we allow you to sign off with a plan that states size of fence, where the gate's gonna be. Surface with, if it's grass, it's grass, whatever, that has the right details, and once you see, you know, we can approve it. And then once you see the plan that has some detail to it, you can just say, yep, we're good to go, take it to Concom. Like you said, not ping-ponging around. I, I think it's simple, I think the plan just needs a little bit more explanation. But I'm happy to give you permission to sign off on it. And I would believe it would be a four-foot chain link fence.
Exactly.
I mean, I think, I think three's too low, I think four is what typically, I can't remember what they did at the lake that Brian's speaking about, but I think it was four.
It's four foot, Chip.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, are folks good with that?
We are, so, yeah, so we'll, we will get an updated plan from what we're looking at.
For the record, yeah.
For the record, with more details as stated, okay.
Yeah, we're gonna get the exact dimensions of it, we're gonna give the type of fencing, we're gonna give the size of the fencing, the height of the-
Because my bet, Concom's gonna want all that.
Yeah, the gate location and the surface.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It'd be good for Ben to have it in the files, Dave, that's a good point, so, yeah. All right. Let's not belabor this. It's another matter, we don't need to go to the public comment, looking for a motion.
So, Mr. Chair, I move that we amend the special permit for this this daycare center at twenty, Del Carmine Street, based on the updated site plan that's presented this evening for a proposed playground area. Pending updates to that plan as discussed tonight, and to be reviewed by you, and upon which you can inform the building inspector that we are good and satisfied with this, this plan.
Seconded.
The motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing seeing non-regular voting members, Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
Kasumi?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, Brian, I'll wait to hear from you on those details.
Thank you very much.
All right, next up is twenty-four fifty-three forty-three forty-eight Main Street. Review final architecture plan, it's my understanding this is not moving forward tonight?
Yeah, we'll be back November twelfth on this, we're not ready.
Okay. We don't need a motion since it's other matters, so if you just make sure you get to Amy wherever, into Dave's earlier point, if even though it's another matter, if you can get it, we're gonna be looking at something, if you can get it in the Friday before.
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk board comments, Joe, you got anything?
No, just town meeting next weekend, right? So.
Yep. How's doing with the F looking?
At the final pavement and strike today.
Yeah.
Can give you a quick update on that, I went, walked the property, and texted Tom last weekend. The inside's done, all the permits were done, it's coming along nicely, we've made a couple small modifications to the landscape plan based on trees that couldn't fit where they were projected to fit, but kept keeping all the numbers the same. So, our, my recommendation to Tom was that he could let Ben know to move forward as he so desired.
Yeah, and we, we've, Ben will be back tomorrow, and he's been, Amy's gonna make sure he gets that message, I've already talked, we've already talked about that.
He told me to come see him in the morning, so I don't know if I'm gonna go see him, or he's coming back out, but.
Okay.
Either way, and we're, we're, we're actually going to Town Council the eleventh for the front, we have to go in front of them to get that wall approved.
He shared a letter with me regarding the, the work that needs to be done in front, that they need to work out with the Town Council, so. There's that as well.
What's the Town Council up to review? That's interesting, would it?
It's, it's because that, that wall in that walkway is, is town property. And we were supposed to get a letter, an agreement between the owners and the town, and that was supposed to be done a year ago, and it just kind of fell flat, so we have the letter, Tom Mullen reviewed the letter. Said it was fine, but we have to have Town Council vote on it, and that's not till the eleventh, so we came here at Stansel on that wall and the walkway.
Okay, interesting, okay.
It's, yeah, it was in the order of conditions. And we didn't read that part closely. We had, we, like I said, we, we were on it a year ago, we were talking about it last August, and then it just kind of like, it just, I don't know. We never felt, we never followed through on it, I guess, and, you know, it's our fault, we, we should have known, we went to pull a permit and we couldn't, obviously. So.
All right.
Live and learn, I guess.
Yeah, not a big deal in the order of things, you know, it'll get taken care of. Amy was kind enough to talk to Sherry about getting us back in person. We are now shooting for January, we've gotta do a couple things. So we only have the two more meetings this year, one in November, one in December, but the plan is to start in-person in the public safety building with our first meeting in January.
Great.
So.
Go, Amy, go, keep pushing.
Just posted if you need more than just you, Tom, to, to get schooled on the equipment, I mean, you know, I don't know if there's gonna be, is it gonna be like a review to go through it all?
Yeah, I'm gonna take that little short bus down there.
The real, the real key is to make sure that the, that the meeting is actually on and posted to the room, because when it's not, then you struggle, but as long as you click and can pull it up, it, it works so easily.
Well, that's one of the reasons for delay, we have to, we have to notice the meetings properly, so they gotta be noticed, going for his hybrid. So. We'll also have a a schedule for twenty-twenty-six for the board to review at the November meeting, too.
Sounds good, yeah, and I already told you I'd jump into that technical training, so let me know when the bus swings by, we'll meet you. All right.
We all wear hockey equipment, even though there's no hockey.
All right, ready for some minutes?
Yep.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the meeting minutes as prepared by Amy for our October fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five meeting.
That's good.
All those in favor, we don't need a roll call here, for all those in favor.
Motion rejoined, Mr. Chair.
Yep, always in order, all right. Good job getting in and out tonight. All right.
Bye. Good night, everyone.